Five thirty, are we on? So are we, we ready to roll? Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have a quorum. This workshop is to discuss the bids that we've received for construction for the sites on the seven point nine million dollar HMGP mitigation supplemental grant. We have a guest, Victoria Dai, and David Marshall is here with us. Victoria and David have worked very hard to come up with sites that we can remove so that we can stay within our budget numbers. So from there, I think we should just roll right into it. Item two is considered for action sites to be removed from the, from the grant, but we're not to that point yet. We need to discuss them and understand what sites are being removed, why, and the dollars that will be affected. So with that, Victoria, which would you like? Would you like your?
Go ahead and hold it down, or, oh, it's good, okay. We'll go ahead and just look at the, the letter of recommendation. Okay, so the city had our second bid on this project, as you're aware, where we bid it once, the numbers came in high. We actually only had one bidder and it came up too high, so the GLO asked for us to rebid the project in a strategic manner in that each of the sites were its own package. So we had the bid opening on August fifteenth, and we actually received two bids. One from Texas Materials, who is, at the time, at the first bid was known as East Texas Asphalt/Gulf Coast. And then we had CE Barker. CE Barker?
You're on.
Am I on? I didn't.
I can hear you.
Okay, and we had CE Barker from out of Houston also bid the project. So you, y'all, council has the engineer's estimate in front of you. Just a quick tabulation of all the packages. You can see the sum of each package go across as well as the working days that each contractor put in for the specific bids. You will see that the total for all base bid packages from Texas Materials was seven million, seven hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. CE Barker came in at nine million, four hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-six cents. You can also see the alternate bid item package there, which is, was put in there for just alternate methods of stabilization should we need it.
Is that the extra work items?
That's, that alternate work items. And then we have the extra work items as well as a package there. The extra work items were for items such as the culverts and the head walls. So you can see the numbers there from each bidder. The city has a budget of six million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-five cents for the construction of this project. Just look into the numbers that I just reviewed, you can clearly see that the city's bids received are over the budget allocated. So in order to bring those numbers down, the city had to consider some sites that were to be removed. I'm gonna backtrack a little bit here. So it, oh, okay. I'm backtracking here to say that the city, we know that the city needs the extra work item package because those are the culverts and the head walls. So we know that we want to have that included. So then, knowing that we need to reduce the sites to be within the six million dollar budget, spoke with David Marshall and we kind of reviewed what sites we, we considered for removal. And you'll see in this letter that we are suggesting for removal in region one, sites number sixteen, which is North Sherwood Forest, and sites number seventeen and eighteen, which is also North Sherwood Forest. Council also has a map that I provided that they can refer to, that will show you which sites are for removal. They're, they're broken in quadrants, so you'll see regions one starting in the, I guess, the west, northwest corner going around, counterclockwise actually. So for region one, like I said, site sixteen and site seventeen and eighteen are to be removed. And the reason for that is that, in our opinion, those roads look pretty decent compared to the rest of the roads on this project. In region two, we have sites number twenty-three and sites number twenty-five. Twenty-three being Ivanhoe Estates Drive and site number twenty-five being Sir Roberts Burns. Same, same condition, both look to be in pretty decent shape so that we could just leave those out. Then we move over to region four with sites number four, Lancelot Drive. We have site number five, Galahad Drive, site number nine, Prince Valiant Drive, sites number eleven and thirty-four, which are Third Street, and also site number thirty-five, which is Cedric. Let me go back in here on Lancelot, Galahad, Prince Valiant, and also Sir Cedric. Those are actually the four roads in this entire project that are currently dirt roads. Because a GLO doesn't require us to necessarily put a hot mix or an oil sand surface. The project actually proposed for us to put limestone base down. So that considered, we figured that the city has the equipment to be able to do that in-house if they decide. Whereas with a surface, like an asphalt or oil sand surface, the city doesn't have the equipment to do that, and a contractor is required for that work. And then number sites, number eleven and thirty-four, Third Street, those looked to be in pretty decent shape, so we considered moving that, removing that site. When we take into account all the sites that just mentioned, that brings us down to be within the city's budget. All packages listed that would be awarded to Texas Materials brings us to six million, three hundred, three hundred and twenty-four thou, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-three cents, which is within the city's budget with a remaining bu, bound budget of thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and twelve cents. According to what Texas Materials put in as their working days, it would be a hundred and eighty-five days to complete this contract. So the recommendation from LJA is to award the contract to Texas Materials based on the listed packages on the third page, third, yeah, third page of the engineer's recommendation letter. The city also has attached behind this recommendation is a full detailed bid tabulation in which a detailed bid tabulation includes all unit prices that contractors provided for each bid item in the contract.
Any questions or comments? It's a lot, it's a lot to absorb.
No, I have, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Number one, so if I do the work, the math, eighty-two sixty-two seven ninety is the combination of the bid package plus the extra work. You have that there in the summary. And then the budget, sixty-three fifty-seven eight eighty-two, I come up with about nineteen, one million, nine hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars that were over, about one point nine million. Is that correct?
Yes, rough, roughly, yes.
And the, the packages we're taking out are, I guess, a little over that, or a little under? A little over?
A little over, to keep, give us thirty-three thousand-ish left, yes.
Okay, so road condition was the primary thought process around taking out existing road condition?
Yeah, that, that was one of the focus, looking at what roads were not in bad, bad shape. Obviously, we want to consider the worst shaped roads to redo. That was one of the priorities in removal, and also if we removed a site, would the city be able to do it in-house?
Okay, how about number of people, number of houses on the road, existing, you know, condition?
Some of that was, David did have that as some factors, but I don't know if that was necessary, the number one factor in the determination.
Okay. I don't know if we were gonna try to discuss each side, or if they could bring some questions on each side, or talk about it, or, I mean, I just drove around and, I went and looked at some that were not on the removal, that I thought was, had questions on why they might not be. You know, when I kind of looked at it, and I didn't know if that was a topic we could discuss or not.
Sure, you can, you can discuss anything you'd like. This is, this is something that Victoria, as the lead engineer, and David Marshall, as the foreman for Public Works, have put their heads together and identified sites which could be removed from it and that gets us down to where we need to be monetarily.
Right. Like, I was curious on like, when I was looking, I guess it's site fifteen, which is Twenty-Eighth Street, which is kind of an interior road?
Twenty-Eighth Street was a different grant entirely, and we came in number twenty-two out of twenty-two, so that's off the table.
No, it's actually, there's a piece of it on this.
Oh, yes, there is a little sliver, yeah.
And I drove it, and I just was wondering why that was something we felt was necessary to leave in. I don't know if, I mean, I, the, the existing road's in pretty good shape. There's really not a hot, a lot of high density. What I did, I kind of made a little graph and I drove around about what the road, current road was, what the density of population was, and then what I thought the traffic was on the road, just by looking at the traffic, and I've driven some of these roads. And that one looked like it was, you know, it's kind of a low to medium density of population. The road was in pretty good shape, and it didn't look like there was a lot of traffic. So I just didn't know why we thought that was something that needed to stay in. In lieu of maybe one of these other roads where there's more traffic. Like, when I looked at the nor, this North Sherwood Forest Drive down on the backside, that road's in really bad shape, and it's got some traffic back there and something, and I, I thought maybe that had more priority than one of these interior roads.
That, that, back there's got three, three or four houses on it.
Yeah, and, but it's an egress point for a lot more houses in that back corner. That's probably one of the best roads in this back corner, and if I was in an egress thought process, having a good road to get out of would be important. And that road back there's in, in, there's a low spot right here. There's a low spot in that back portion that I think they would probably raise a little bit. I'm just talking. So that's just one. Those two, if there was possible to switch, I don't know what the difference in prices was. One's one thirty-eight and one is, what's the other one? Number sixteen, it's, it's maybe a bit more money. It's two twenty-one, so that's, there's nine, there's ninety grand difference there, but.
So where specifically are you talking about?
I can point on the, point on the thing. So this is twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
And it's, it's all asphalt today, for the most part. And this, this, there's a little bit of rough spots in here, it's a little low here, but there's not a whole lot of, there's not a lot back there today. I mean, it's, I mean, this, there's, we're fixing fifteenth, there's a lot of houses more back in here, but this particular street, you cut back here, you get to the street, it's in pretty good shape. The, the only reason I'm thinking this is more important is it's an egress point. There are, there is more houses up back here, it's just an egress point to keep this consistent and nice all the way to get people out of, out of this back area. Because some of these roads, I don't know what they're gonna be like in like a weather situation. This is higher, it's a little bit lower here, so I was just looking to try to be consistent with trying to keep roads of egress back. That's, that's just a thought process I had when I was looking at that road, so, just a discussion. Not, you know, this is really my first chance to look at it, so I was just, this is one of the thoughts I came up with. Others have the same thought process or not?
That was part of the process of doing Friar Tuck to, to be that, that egress road. After, we've driven these on Sherwood North numerous times. They're not near as bad as I think it is on Twenty-Eighth. We spend probably about a third of our asphalt budget patching Twenty-Eighth.
Really?
So it's, and, and it, to get just a sliver of it done by a contractor is just that much less than we would have to do to get it right.
So that's good information.
Yeah, okay.
Is that that low spot in front of the greenhouse?
Yeah.
It always washes out?
Yep.
The other one that I kind of question on, I guess, was, what's it, it's Little John nineteen, Little John Boulevard, which is that internal. I didn't know what the thought process was on that road, I'm staying in.
Have you driven that one?
Yeah, I drove it, it's, it's pretty rough.
Pretty, pretty bad shape through there. Other than the fact that there was none in the original, that was the only one for that area. It's in bad shape. I think, I think we need to, to do something with it. The rest of Little John is not in the best of shape, again.
That's kind of what I was saying, we're fixing a middle, we're fixing a little part of it, I mean, when the, it's on either side of it.
Less money that we have to spend to do the whole thing.
Okay, so it might be something we come back in the future and fix the two ends as well?
Sure, sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what, that's my main point on that.
This, this is not a, a, the end of it.
Yeah, so let me, I know.
This is just the beginning.
So you may not have a background of how this, this grant was developed or the application. So the way the city was able to get this application approved is that we had to really focus on, on sites in the city where there was a low water, like a low crossing or culvert, so the entire road couldn't be done. We would replace the culvert and then we would get a new road on top of it. So sometimes I think when we look at the map, it doesn't quite make sense why an entire road looks terrible and we're only focused on such a small sliver of that. So that's how this was approved through GLO, HMGP supplemental, so.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the thought process. I think it's important for, on record for people to hear it and know, so it's just, I think it's, because sometimes people don't hear.
Lot of, lot of work and thought put into this.
I know that, and that's why I'm trying to get on record a little bit.
I know, and I appreciate that.
Asking questions, I think I get it on record and people can understand, kind of, that we're not making random decisions
Correct.
on what and how things are done. Yeah, those were the, really the only two. I mean, I, I looked at Sherwood Forest, I think it'd be nice to have it, North Sherwood Forest fixed all the way around, but I do understand that it is drivable today. You know, it's inconsistent with the rest of that road, but it is drivable.
We could say it's the, it's the best of the worst.
It's the best of the worst. So, I don't, yeah, that was really, those were really my only two thought processes when I looked at it about. I mean, I guess I looked at the back of that first road on the thing, which is, what is it, is it Lance, is that Lancelot?
Lancelot, yeah.
This road here? That road, I mean, it's got a lot of stuff on it, I mean, it's, it's in bad shape back in there, and I didn't know what future plans might be for that road. There's a lot of houses back there.
Pretty much the same as what we've done on Friar Tuck.
That, see, that, if it's, if it's a candidate for what Friar Tuck is, I think that's probably a better thing than asphalt.
Yeah, we, we put quite a bit of base on there already.
It's something that we can do. You should drive Friar Tuck and see the, the result of it. And then Eighteenth Street was also done similarly, and Carolyn's been very happy with the results there. We need to get a little bit of rain to tap it down, but other than that.
Yeah, I just think that's maybe an area that where maybe that's a candidate for that. If we're taking it out, we need to look at that for.
We're looking at all those sites that we're taking out to do them the way that Friar Tuck and Eighteenth Street have been done.
Perfect. Those were my questions, so.
Just for clarification, sites seven, twelve, and thirteen, which are Mill Creek, Sir Henry, and, excuse me, Mill Creek, Sir Henry, yeah, both Sir Henry, two different legs of Sir Henry. Are those, those primary targets because they have the, the inflow of watershed coming through them?
They're gonna be for egress and ingress as we begin to work on Ivanhoe Drive.
Gotcha.
So I did get another wrinkle for the brain the other day. Charles Rawson told me that they own Mill Creek from Lancelot to the highway and that they would like to have thirty thousand dollars for it. I came back and sat down with C D and we pulled, Will did, and they pulled the map out and the Platts, and it's, Tyler County KED shows us is owning it. We've got the, the surveys and the records that show that we own it. I just have not gone back to Charles Rawson yet to tell them that we own it. But that's, to answer your question, yes, that's, the plans are to open Mill Creek up out to the highway to give another way out once work begins on Ivanhoe Drive. Thoughts?
No. I know, surprising, right?
Well, maybe, maybe we, Victoria and David have done a very good job of identifying what.
They'll, they'll, they always do an excellent job. The, the first thought that actually, okay, so that was, that was a slight embellishment on the truth. I did have a thought, but I thought again about it. The first thought that came to my mind was Toller Road, but that's an entire safety question and not just from the entry to the highway, but the one-lane bridge. It's not, not really very feasible.
According to Joe Black, you're right, yeah. Joe Blackshire was going to pave Toller Road until he found out that TexDOT was going to replace the bridge. And because of that, he was not gonna put pavement there. He decided that he would help Ivanhoe and do Ivanhoe Drive, and it may be the only time that he'll be able to do something for Ivanhoe. And that's because we helped him and Tyler County overall with the low to moderate income portion of their grant requests.
Sure.
What?
No, C D was just telling me to discuss the low to moderate LMI requirements of this contract. No, no, you mentioned it, you, you're good. That, it's covered. As part of the contract, you know, the city has to meet a qualification of low to moderate income.
And that's how some of the sites were selected?
Correct, and that's why some of the sites were required to be left in the contract.
No, I think that, yeah, makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. You're the best.
No, thank you.
I had another question, but it's not related to the selection of which roads. It's more about the bids and the way they came in. I, when I lived the bid tab, I saw a bunch of gaps, big gaps between the two bidders on certain sections. Where there's, you know, fifty percent, the low bid is fifty percent of the other price, and I don't know if we are gonna question those somehow to make sure.
Let me, let me address that. We have history with the, the overall low bidder. The ones that came in half of the bid on, on certain sites, in my mind, those are misquoted. The ones that came in half of the bid in, in cer- certain sites, in my mind, those are misquoted. If something is egregiously low, you know the, you know the, the game. If someone makes a mistake, they're gonna come back and they're not, either they're not gonna be able to do the job or they're gonna ask for more money. Uh, Gulf States or Texas Materials is a known force, we've got a lot of experience with them. Uh, they're close. This other outfit is out of Houston. If we have any warranty work, are they, you know, how soon are they gonna get here? The lead time that they take to do their work is four times longer than what Gulf States quoted. And, uh, collectively, we're, we're pretty comfortable, I think, with Gulf States and, and what they've done in the past and the proposal that they put forth.
Have we questioned that at all yet? Have we asked them about that?
To Baker, or?
To Texas Materials, where they're extremely low on, on a few of the bids. Have we gone back and said, and asked questions that might, we check that?
Yeah, let me backtrack.
Yeah, you can't, you can't go back and negotiate and seal bids.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I, that you can ask questions, clarification, right?
Yeah, I did, uh, let me just.
And she has.
Yeah, let me go back to C.E. Barker. I vetted them, you know, I, I looked at the references and ironically, they listed LJA, our Houston division, as being, um, a reference. So I did actually speak to two of the references and they said that C.E. Barker does a great job. They, they had no qualms about recommending them. The only thing that I found interesting is that they focus on more of paving that is a rigid pavement, concrete paving, paving. Um, so, they were going to actually sub out the work for the surface on this project. Um, so I knew that they were gonna do the, the base work, the, the stabilization, but they don't do, uh, flexible pavement, so they were gonna do, you know, use a sub for that. And it's not against the rules to use a sub, it's just upfront.
It adds cost.
Yeah, it adds cost, that makes sense, yep.
The other thing was the material.
The material, also, uh, we, we, we changed the hot mix design to a oil-sand surface that we know is something that Texas Materials prides himself on being able to provide very similar structured of asphalt, but at a reduced cost. It is a pri- 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 proprietary, I can't even, proprietary product. So, it's not that whoever's, um, gets it from them, ever worth a sub, doesn't necessarily know how to work that material. They can lay it like hot mix, but I'm sure that Texas Materials knows how to work it better. So the final product may be a little different if you're using a different contractor who's not familiar with the product.
The rest of the story is that they have to go to Gulf Coast to get the materials. So, where Gulf Coast is gonna get their markup regardless, whoever goes to buy it has to get that markup plus put their markup on top of it.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
And therein lies the difference in price between the two.
Just wanna make sure we'd ask those questions. When I do bid tabs, I'm always, when I look for those.
Sure.
Big gaps, I'm gonna ask questions around those.
Yeah, but the, I'll also answer, sorry, but going back to the bid tab, because you had questions about unit prices.
That's what I was gonna point out.
For the Texas Mater- we were looking at Texas Materials bid. I know there were some questions about prices that they provided in the SW3P, which is Storm Water Pollution Prevention Item. You know, looking at that, okay. So there's, so there are some questions on why some of the costs seem a little excessive. Um, so to backtrack, SW3P stands for Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. Um, and generally, as, uh, for LJ, we don't specifically tell the contractor what they need to put down. It's really for them to give a little thought in how they're gonna be able to, um, prevent any runoff going into y'all's lake. It could be in the form of putting down filter fabric, putting down some control logs. Um, and sometimes i- if we have a wet, a wet season, it's pumping the site. So all of those are included in SW3P numbers. So, we can never tell whether we're gonna be in a rainy season. So it's the contractor taking a gamble on how much they put that cost down. I've had situations when a contractor bids it really low. We have a wet season and they end up having to provide de-watering for the site, so they're eating the cost on that. So, when I spoke to, um, Texas Materials, Bobby Dodgeit, Dodgeit specifically, he said that he is willing to really reevaluate the SW3P cost, um, and not necessarily charge the city what he has there as a hundred percent lump sum. He's willing to, and he said, he took a look at it, he said that he can, he thinks there'll be able to be a ten percent reduction in the cost of the SW3P items.
Did y'all hear that part?
That, uh, that Bobby said that they're willing to, you know, take a look and reevaluate when they're actually putting the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan down. And he says on average, a ten percent reduction in the cost. So he'll build, he'll build the city, what are their, whatever they physically used for implementation.
So, do we wanna talk about culverts?
Yeah.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Before we get too far out.
Yes.
Uh, a hundred and eighty-five days, calendar days, work days.
Working days.
How about rainout days since we're getting in and we'll be doing most of this during that time?
Um, yeah, we don't ca- we would get them their rain days, we would not count that, yes.
I mean, that's pretty standard.
Yeah, holiday, yeah, standard holidays and rain days, yes.
So in another effort to control costs, uh, Public Works is going to be installing the culverts. As part of the contract, Gulf States is going to be purchasing the culverts under the grant dollars and providing them to the city. Public Works is going to be, there'll be seventy sites with a hundred and thirty culverts that'll be installed as this project begins, or as this, these jobs begin to roll out. So there's gonna be a timing issue of moving from one site to the next. We want to have the culverts ready for the, the new road to come in in advance. And we want Public Works ahead of the roadwork before it begins on the next site. So there's a coordinated effort gonna have to be put in place to go from Project One to Project Two to Project Three and all of that.
Is that the five hundred and fifteen thousand extra work, is that the cost of the culverts?
Yes, that's correct. And that's actually, um, and that may reduce or go up some. I think it's, should reduce, 'cause some of the sites that we removed had culverts. I didn't remove that from the extra work item, so there would be some reduction in there.
That's good, that's good to know.
I think there's seven or eight.
Yeah, crossings.
It's not a big, it's not a big number, but.
And it, it is a cost in which, um, it's a material purchase, so we will get the invoices from Texas Materials. So we're paying them at cost at what it's costing them to purchase. So there's no profit built into it.
I bet you they get a little bit.
For the management of, yeah, project management of it, yeah.
Administration. Can't fault them for that, they're, they're really working hard for us.
And it also includes, um, backfill material, so I know that, that was a question. So the culverts include culverts, the backfill material, the cement bags for the head walls and the rebar used to stake them in place.
And the backfill has to be the, uh, stabilized sand.
Yep, stabilized, yeah.
Stabilized cement, yeah.
And then the bags of concrete with the rebar driven down through them for the head walls.
Yes, and that's also variable, because in our plans, there's a detail, um, kinda give you a standard detail, but, you know, each site's gonna be a little different, so we may need less than what's shown in the details. So again, um, the extra work cost is a ve- it, it's gonna fluctuate.
Um, Ms. Victoria, one, it, looking through the, um, the tabulated detail on the bids, one of the, the. The really small print package in the back.
Yeah.
Um, two of nine.
Two of nine?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and, and you can look down to the, the, within the last three items on almost any of these sections. And I'm just noticing that one of the items that has the greatest disparity between the bidders has to do with the construction of driveway turnouts and intersection turnouts, sometimes as much as twenty times the amount from one to the next.
Mm.
Which to me begs the question, do we have an apples-to-apples bid comparison here for these? Or has one of the bidders left off some items that might be crucial and critical for inclusion? Um, now, I, I, I'm a big fan of the work that Gulf States has done, uh, don't have any issue with them. But, as a contractor myself, I do always like to know exactly what is entailed in the bid. Because if, if we have a section done and we don't get turnouts, um, where we really need them over the life of that section, we, we look at an increased, um, or decreased lifespan, as it were.
Can we do selective turnouts?
Um, so selective turnouts meaning the driveway?
We, we pick which turnouts to, that we think need to be done? David, you and I kinda talked about.
Personally, I don't, I don't care for the turnouts, they always break off.
When we ta- talk about turnout, we're talking about the driveway. Oh, okay, yeah. If that's something that the city wants to consider removing, I don't think there's an issue with that. That's up to the city, 'cause I know initially, when we started this, these projects with the city, we didn't have turnouts. And I think over time, there was issues with homeowners saying that there was a little bit of a blip. Um, and then as we moved forward with next contracts, we were like, okay, well, let's go ahead and include these driveway turnouts for the smooth transition.
How can we address the, the bumps, David, for, if there's no turnouts at a driveway?
Well, I think it's intersection turnouts.
Is that what we're?
The intersection turnouts.
Oh, we need the intersection turnouts, yes.
Intersection turnouts, sure.
Intersection turnouts are where the biggest gaps is.
Big numbers there.
It's, it's both, it's, it's both tracking through, it oftentimes is the intersection. Now, I will say, this is a personal, personal perspective on things, is that driveways are higher, uh, they're, they're a section of the edge of the road, which is the most, most vulnerable, which is also the most traveled. People are coming in and out, day after day after day. Um, maybe we look at how driveway turn-ins are constructed. Um, but I think that they do serve a real crucial purpose in lengthening the, the lifespan of our roads.
I'll agree, and that's, that's my concern with them, is the ones before don't get the same base treatment as the road does. So when you come off that hard road and the asphalt's just laying on grass.
Yes, correct. Yeah, so the construction of the turnouts generally are just an overlay.
Right.
And it, it, you are correct, it tends to break out or off if we don't do any sort of base improvements. Um, that would, it's gonna, it's gonna add to the cost, yes. Um, that is something that we can discuss, but you're aware, it's gonna add cost if we're doing base improvements to someone's private driveway. Um, and the issue also arises that everyone's driveway is, you know, it's easy to repair gravel driveways, uh, existing base driveways. I don't know if there are concrete driveways out there, but I don't know if the homeowner wants us busting up their concrete driveway. Um, so that's a lot of variables in, in play when we.
Of course, if there's a concrete driveway, you wouldn't.
You just overlay it, you would just.
Or blend to it.
Yeah. But, it's a conversation to have if y'all want to consider full-depth improvements.
I didn't wanna get two-way out of, out in the weeds, but it, it was just, that's what, that's what spoke to me looking at the numbers.
Good conversation, good stuff.
So would you have two different types, one for a concrete? You mean, would you have two different policies, I guess, on the, on the contract? One for where you have concrete, one where you just have gravel or dirt driveways?
I think it all depends on what the driveway is and what the fig- the configuration is. I mean, you can't make a, a single brush stroke decision based on this one's cement and this one's gravel. It's got to be based on the, the driveway and, and what it's gonna take.
Who makes that call?
David.
Would the city, in throwing us out here, be willing to do the base improvements? Kind of pulverize a little bit of four feet from, I don't know, I forget if ours is three or four. Pulverize up to four feet, we work it and pack it down, and then just have the contractor come in and put that surface?
If, if we had the time, we could.
I know, I think that's a lot, yeah.
But we are at our limits with these culverts right now.
So what's the, uh, what's the answer, or is there one? Yes and no.
I, uh, well, I would rather have one broken off than not have one at all. 'Cause it, it, it then becomes the base improvement layer in the future for us to potentially lay over down the road.
Yeah, if it's, if it's concrete, I get it. If it's, if it's a gravel driveway, I don't see a problem with it. There may be a bump, but we come in all the time and fill in on top of culverts because it's to our benefit.
Right.
You know, to keep them from getting crushed or opened up. But if it's concrete, that's holding the ball.
I'm just talking about the, the, the turn.
Not just to remove it from the contract.
Was the question whether or not we're gonna actually do the turnouts?
Yeah, someone had asked that. To remove the driveway turnouts, I don't, I think to lea- go ahead and leave them in the contract is what counts.
I didn't actually have them removed. David and I had been talking about how to go about them and what, what would be the right way to, to address them. And there's no, there's no easy answer to those.
Could, instead of asphalt, you have the contractor build a base layer? That's, on a gravel road, if they build, if they put a base down and leave the base without asphalt, that might be good enough. So they spend the cost on a, on a base to make that transition instead of asphalt. I'm just talking again, I'm brainstorming.
Just be wasted money.
Wasted money.
All together, yeah.
It's just, it's gonna get run off.
It's gonna get run off, blown away, rinsed off with the rain.
And besides that, it becomes almost a grinding and pulverizing aggregate for the edge of the new roadway, 'cause.
You know firsthand.
I do, I do. Loose, loose gravel just tears up a brand-new street.
Maybe one of the necessary evils that we have to have in there. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not gonna say yea or nay at this point.
When do you have to know, when do you have to make that decision? We award the contract, when could that be? When can those discussions be had with the turnouts, with the?
Yeah, the contract, well, with Texas Materials, I think when we started this conversation with them, they probably won't mobilize until October. So we have a few, well, now it's September tomorrow, but yeah, we have about a month and a half.
Make those decisions and have, have discussions with them, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's not set in stone that we are going to do them, but they're gonna be in the bid and right now. Right now, we're moving forward with the idea that we're going to put the turnouts for the driveways. Um, you know, any, any kicking the can down the road any further just delays us longer and longer in being able to put a shovel in the dirt.
Yeah, I like that, make a decision with the man, and then if you, if you, if it does make sense to take them out, if you have a plan.
If we can, we can, if we can't, we can't.
Yes.
Does that work for you, Victoria?
Yeah, um, legally, we'd have to award the contract as is, and any discussions with change orders would have to happen after a contract's executed.
That's the rest of the story.
Even more money.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it has to be awarded as it was bid.
Yes. Yeah, and once your contract between the city and Texas Materials is executed, um, discussions of any change orders can then be made.
So is there any, any other discussion, any other questions from anybody? Carolyn?
No.
Will?
I'm good. And these roads that we, that we're talking about taking out, um, Lancelot, for like site number four, Lancelot Drive, which is dirt. You're gonna come back with the ash mix on that?
And, and, and base mix, yeah.
That's the, that's the plan on all these roads that are not in here.
Everything that's blue is, is within our capability to do.
It won't be asphalt, but it'll be an improvement.
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense, you don't want asphalt in the middle of these roads.
No.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Mr. Harrington, Mr. McWherter? Mr. Marshall?
Nope, I'm good.
Ms. Di. So I, I have about a list of twenty questions here for you.
Yeah, I'm ready for them.
So, uh, are we ready to move forward? Uh, consider for action sites to be removed from the seven point nine million dollar grant? Uh, do I have a motion to accept the, the contract as it is? And the roads that are begin, be, being removed?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, that we accept the recommendations from Victoria Di from October, August 23rd on the removal of Region One, Two, and Four sites, and, uh, award the contract based on that recommendation.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Have a motion to adjourn? Are any discussion, any further discussion? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're so adjourned. Victoria, thank you so much.
Um, I got an update from.